This is the Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is our September meeting. It's Tuesday, September 8th. Shannon, would you do the roll call, please?
Jordan.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
Lutrip.
Here.
Messina.
Here.
Rumppler.
Here.
Ward.
Okay, thank you. Next, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the name of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so next we have approval of minutes from our August 11th meeting. Is there any comments regarding the approval of minutes?
Mr. Chairman, yes, there was a word omitted in my comments. The third paragraph from the last should be "not" in there. Well, the workshop should not be citywide, so if you would add that word "not," I'd appreciate it.
Did you get that staff or Shannon?
And I would approve the minutes as amended. I move for approval of minutes amended.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Fleming. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the minutes are approved without amendment. And then, next on the agenda is our spot for public comments, and that would be if anyone is here to address the commission on a matter other than one of the items on the agenda tonight. All right, seeing none, we're down to staff comments.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So a few items. The first one I want to talk about is the Parking It on Sherman Better Block Party that the city has been working on in partnership with the Coeur d'Alene Association of Realtors and CDA 2030. It's going to be on Sherman Avenue between 16th and 17th Streets on September 18th and 19th. And this is in conjunction with International Parking Day, where you take away parking spaces and turn them into public spaces, and that was a day invented by Rebar. And it's also, it's being funded by a grant, a Better Block grant. So what we're doing is transforming this section of the corridor and temporarily making it look like a Makers District. We're doing fake building facades, we're narrowing the street, adding bike lanes, adding parklets, pop-up park, and then there's going to be a bunch of events and activities, so we hope everyone can attend. And we are looking for some volunteers to help with setting up and volunteering during the event, as well as cleanup. And then, the next one is, we were asked by the Fort Grounds neighborhood to consider doing a neighborhood compatibility ordinance, and asked if we could do a workshop, and the commission had supported that. We are working with University of Idaho's legal department, or their, I guess their legal program, law program. They're going to help us look at some different ordinance as well, and determine if they think there's maybe some different examples out there, as well as the ones that were brought to us, just so we can kind of see a nice sampling of different, how communities have handled this type of thing. And then, once we have that information, we can schedule the workshop, and we can certainly invite the council if they want to participate, but we will definitely have a workshop no matter what, so that we can discuss how we want to move forward with this ordinance. And then lastly, our new planner is going to be starting on September 28th, so that's Mike Behary from Bloomington, Illinois, and we are very excited to have him come onboard. Thank you.
Hillary, if someone wanted to volunteer or help on the Parking It on Sherman, who do they contact, what do they do, and when is setup time?
Yes, so we are having everyone talk to the Coeur d'Alene Association of Realtors, contacting them to sign up, but I don't have their phone number on me, so people can get in touch with me first, and then I can forward them on to the association.
Okay. And what is setup time on Friday in the morning?
It starts at 8:00 a.m., and then the actual event, the fun festivities start around 4:00, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Friday, and then the activities are 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturday, and then cleanup starts at 8:00 a.m. on Sunday.
All right, great, thanks.
If I could take a second, I'd like to, you know, I'm old enough now, I'm starting to be in the, when I tell stories, I say I'm old enough to remember when East Sherman was a very vibrant area, you know, and it's great real estate, the proximity, realtors talk about location, location, location. It just blows me away, you know, that it, to me, is just waiting to take off, I think. You know, back when I was a little younger, you had the Cove Bowl, you had Talk of the Town Motel, you had Harts Motel, you had the Rat Skellers, you had Dairy Delight, Topper, McEwen's Grocery. I mean, it was great, right Brad? You remember those days?
When I was 19, the Rat Skellers was great, yeah.
But any rate, you know, I'd just like to say, I'd just like to say a kudo to you, Hillary, and your staff in the city for really taking this thing on. All the planning staff is doing, I think, a great job to focus attention on East Sherman. And then also, you know, a real strong kudo to the Board of Realtors for stepping up and securing this grant to make this Makers District event happen. You know, I think East Sherman is a complex dynamic that, like a lot of things, it's going to take more than the city's efforts alone, you know, and to have other entities like the Board of Realtors putting their shoulder behind the same side of the boulder to move something, I think is hugely important. I'd like to mention that Denise Lundie, I know, has had a huge hand in this thing, and you mentioned how folks could get behind this thing. It's contact the Board of Realtors, I do have their phone number, 667-0664. And so, you know, this is the second thing, by the way, that the Board of Realtors have stepped up. If you recall, they coughed up $30,000 for playground equipment at Person's Field, so that's really, you know, putting effort into the community, and kudos.
And I'd like to just add, I'm fortunate enough to be on the committee, and there's some, you know, business people and such, but, and Hillary, you can perhaps touch on this, but the city has already done some things that the public might not even be aware of what the city is doing to make this first step happen, because I agree, it's going to take the city a little bit to show that, you know, they've got their eye on East Sherman, and then it's the businesses. And there's a number of businesses that are on this committee that are very excited about the city participating finally, and doing some minor things, and I know we talked about crosswalks and striping, and if you want to touch on that a little bit.
Certainly, yes. So we had the walking audit done, and that was basically going out and assessing the Sherman corridor and figuring out where there are areas, maybe potential deficiencies or safety concerns, and then there was recommendations, and that was from our consultant, Chris Danley, with Vitruvian Planning. And since then, we've had an internal meeting and actually started making some changes. We identified some easy wins based on the recommendations and made some quick changes, and I think are already really taking strides to improve Sherman. Some of those things were, there was a tree that was overhanging the signal at 11th and Sherman, and so that was trimmed back, so now you can actually see the full signal, which is important for safety. We've already adjusted the PED timing on the walk, crosswalks, and so that, I think, should help as well to make it a safer environment for pedestrians getting across, where there are signalized crosswalks. The crosswalk at 6th and at 21st have also been restripped with the high-impact striping, which is one of the things that the consultant had said, and that's, I think, very important for visibility as well. And then there was a truck that was selling wood that was out on Sherman for a while, longer than is permitted per code, and was blocking the signs for the crosswalk by 21st, so that code enforcement took action on that. And I believe some of the signs have already been lifted, there were some signs that were too low, and then there's also, there was a stop sign that was blocking part of the sidewalk that's been relocated. There was, I believe, it was at 11th as well, one of the PED signals wasn't accessible because there wasn't concrete around that, so that's going to be taken care of soon. So, some positive things.
Yeah, and you've done a great deal of work on this, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure a lot of the people on that committee do as well. And one of the things that I'm a little excited about, we talked about, is actually naming that section. And I guess there's going to be somewhat of a contest or something like that at some point in time, where, you know, there's going to be a name for this section down there. Where it used to be called, I forget, Heritage Way or?
No, it used to be Miracle Mile.
Miracle Mile, and so...
Oh, yeah, way, way, way back.
You remember that? Yeah. So they're going to, I think, try to name it again, but they're going to have a lot of city input and some sort of contest somehow, I'm not sure of the details.
I can clarify that. So actually, at this Parking It on Sherman event, we will have an opportunity for people to name the district, and so that'll be fun, and so we'll just be gathering ideas at that event, but then we'll do it beyond, so if people can't attend any of the two days of the event, then there will be other opportunities to provide input. But what the local Realtors are going to be doing is providing some prize for whoever's idea wins, and so we'll throw a lot of ideas into the pot and see what works for the stakeholders and for the area around Sherman.
Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you, Hillary. Okay, we have one public hearing tonight, it's in two parts, and this is quasi-judicial. The applicant is the Village at Orchard Ridge, location is 704 West Walnut. So, Part A is a proposed 1.99 acre planned unit development, the Village at Orchard Place PUD in the R17 zoning district, and that's PUD 3-15. And then, Part B of this is a proposed R34 density increase, special use permit in the R17 district, and that's SP 4-15. These are both quasi-judicial hearings. Does any commissioner have conflict to declare on this? No. Okay, seeing none. We'll have Sean do the staff report, and then the applicant's representatives, who I see sitting out there, can come up and make your presentation. Sean, you want to go ahead?
Sure.
It's all yours, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Brad. All right, so as you had mentioned, the applicant is the Village at Orchard Ridge. The representative tonight is Gordon Longwell, Longwell Trap Architects. We do have a PUD and a special use permit request before us tonight. The location is right adjacent to 704 West Walnut Avenue. The actual structure that we would be discussing tonight didn't have an address associated with it, so we went with the closest one that they owned. All right, so a quick note about the PowerPoint tonight is, so the findings for a planned unit development encompass those of a special use permit. So what I am going to do tonight, in the interest of time, is go through these, and I'll make it really clear where it is. The special use permit findings, B8A, B and C, mirror those of the PUD findings, B8A, B8B and B8D. So the difference is, is that the PUD, letter C, is different than letter C of the SUP, which D is actually the same as the SUP for C, so I'll explain that as we move forward. You will still need to make two sets of findings. All right, so here is the aerial photo of the subject property. Everyone is really familiar with this, is the bridge across US 95, as it turns down and turns into Walnut here and heads north as US 95, and the off-ramp from Northwest Boulevard to get on to US 95. So the decision points tonight, there are two of them. A is the approval of the PUD for the Village at Orchard Ridge. They are requesting a maximum height of 85 feet versus the 45 that is allowed in an R17 for a multifamily structure, which is a residential use. And then the open space, which is an unbuildable 1.993 acre of, acres of area, which is usable open space, which is 10% of the gross land area. And, B, which is a special use permit, they are requesting an increase of density from R17 to an R34 designation. They are requesting a total of 50 units on the subject property versus the maximum, which would be allowed by approval of 68, and there is a staff condition associated with that. I'll bring that up at the end. All right, so land uses in the area are listed here, multifamily, residential and civic, with some single-family and residential and commercial uses located north of US 95 and Walnut, and some single-family residential and duplexes located east of Lincoln Way. The subject property is gently sloped and currently holds a structure to be demolished, which we'll discuss here in just a moment. All right, so here is the zoning, I was talking about this. You can see a large swath of property, and all the property that is owned there by the applicant is zoned R17. There are various special use permits associated with this throughout the years. North of that, we have some R12, and also have some C17 and C17L, and then largely R12 surrounding that. So, land use, you can see it's largely a civic area, that's denoted in the blue, and then we have single-family dwellings, a little bit of vacant, my mouse is not pointing, some commercial up here off of Northwest Boulevard and here at the corner where US 95 makes the corner. All right, so it's a little difficult to see, but I do have a zoomed version of this. This is the overall site master plan. I'll leave this up for the applicant when I get finished, so he can discuss the area. And this is a zoomed-in corner of that, and you can see this is the building that they are proposing. Here is the footprint, as well as the access, some of the parking, the surface parking, as well as the parking below. I'll get into the open space in just a moment. And these are conceptual building sections, just showing the residential, five levels of residential over two levels of parking. A side view of the same. All right, so now we're going to get into the findings. So B8A is the same for a PUD as it is for the special use permit, is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan, so the subject property does fall within the existing city limits, and it's known as the Appleway North 4th Street area, and it's stable-established. Here is a map, and this denotes the boundary in black of this area. There's a green and purple area. Subject property is here, right in white, and it's in the stable-established purple area, and here is the definition of stable-established. So there's a diverse mix of residential, medical, commercial and warehousing land uses. The area is very gently sloped with some drop-off in elevation within a block of Northwest Boulevard. This elevation change has also defined the break from commercial to residential uses for much of the area's history. So this is North 4th Street today, a portion of the comprehensive plan, as it applies to this project. Here is a portion of the North, the Appleway North 4th Street tomorrow, out of the comprehensive plan. Rather than read this all, I have underlined the area that directly related to this request, which is infill and multifamily housing located next to Arterial and Collector Streets. The overall density is for the entire area, not for this specific piece of property. Significant comprehensive plan policies, and these are in your staff report, and they are defined. Would take about five slides or more to try and put these all up here, so I just listed them out, and they are in your staff report. So B8B, once again, this is the same for a PUD as well it is for the special use permit. The design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location, setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. So they are requesting an elderly housing residential multifamily structure on the site, consisting of a total of 50 units, and the structure is planned to have 10 units per floor over two levels of parking. You can see we went through the zoning and land use maps under general information for supporting info. In the following slide, we'll show some architectural renderings of the property. So here is a view of what they are proposing. As you can see, there is some slope there, and some of it is daylighted, and some of it goes under the grade. And as you turn, you can see the structure that's directly east of this, and it just gives a different view. All right, so here's the difference. So B8C is different than B8C for a special use permit, and so this is for the PUD only, is that the proposal is or is not compatible with natural features of the site and adjoining properties. So once again, I mentioned that it's gently sloped along the Northwest Boulevard exit ramp up to the site. Along US 95, the property is generally flat. The neighboring properties or budding properties are owned by the same nonprofit or are of similar use. The site is sloped with an existing structure that will be removed to make way for the proposed structure. And next is some contour lines. So rather than outlining the subject property, which you can kind of see here in the light black color, I didn't want to mess with the contours below, you can see that those five-foot contours are pretty far apart, you know, it shows that there is some slope there. When you get over here, everybody knows, when you get off the exit there to drop down to Northwest Boulevard, that's where you start to see some more intense slopes, when the lines start running together, start getting close like that. So here are some photos of the subject property. So this is from the Northwest Boulevard exit ramp, and this is taking a look at the structure that will eventually be removed if approved, and looking northeast. And then from US 95, looking south into the subject property, once again, that is the building that would be removed. All right, so B8D. So this is the same as the special use finding B8C. So the location, design and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities and services. So on pages 14 and 15 in your staff report are all of the comments that were made by various departments concerning this. Safe to say that utilities are there and available. All right, so this is where we go directly, just straight to the PUD, this doesn't apply to the special use permit anymore. So finding B8E is that the proposal does or does not provide adequate private common open space areas determined by the commission, no less than 10% of the gross land area, free of buildings, streets, driveways or parking areas. The common open space shall be accessible to all users of the development and usable for open space and recreational purposes. So the next slide shows that there's .1993 acres of open space that is proposed, which is 10% of the site. It's important to note that there is quite a bit of additional extra open space, I think, due to the nature of the clientele that are envisioned, that this would actually be flatter and usable for the people there. There's more than 10% open space, but that's what they provided, so that's what I gave them. Okay, so moving on to finding B8F is off-street parking does or does not provide parking sufficient for users of the development. So this basically says that the designation for this site would be 62 years of age or older, which would allow them to reduce their parking standard from your typical multifamily dwelling, from, based on number of bedrooms, to .5 per unit. As you can see, based on the site plan that they had provided, they're providing well over that, and they're providing two levels of parking, plus some outside flat surface parking as well. I wasn't able to give you what they have, because I didn't know how many bedrooms per unit that they had, if it was to be looked at just as multifamily. So they have assured me that their, the age group of people that would be living there would be at least 62 years of age. Finding B8G is that the proposal does or does not provide for an acceptable method of perpetual maintenance for all the common property. This has been around for 94 years, I'm not real concerned that they would go defunct and go away, but there's a 15-person board of directors that's associated with the Village at Orchard Ridge, which is what they provided for this finding. So we do have one proposed condition, comes from the planning department, is that the special use permit limit to a total of 50 units for the subject property versus the 68 that they would be allowed if they were just to get an approval outright. So a planning commission must consider this request, make appropriate findings to approve, deny or deny without prejudice, and your finding worksheets are attached. Suffice it to say that we also mailed, as we were supposed to, and didn't receive any comments, as I understand. That's it for my staff report, is there any questions?
So 62 years old is considered elderly?
It's the new 40.
According to our code for parking, yes. You're expected to be on a bike at that point.
We may have to look at that sometime, when we have time. All right, any questions of Sean? All right, I guess you're off the hook for now, Sean, thank you. Gordon, are you doing the presentation? All right, state your name and address. I need you to raise your right hand after that, so I can swear you in. State your name and address.
My name is Gordon Longwell, I reside at 8050 Quartz Court, Hayden, Lake Idaho.
Okay, and then Gordon, you swear all the testimony you will give us tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission members, for the opportunity to present our requests before you tonight. And I say our requests because not only do I stand before you as the architect representing this client, but I'm also a fellow board member on this board. And I have to say, in the four years that I've served on this board, it's probably the most rewarding board, even more so than the time I spend on this commission, I'm sorry. And before I start, I would like to thank you guys, because I do know personally how much of a sacrifice it is for you guys to do this for our city. Let me tell you a little bit about the Village at Orchard Ridge, you probably know of it as Coeur d'Alene Homes and Heritage Place. About two years ago, we went through a branding to rebrand the facility, and part of the reason that we did is because of the product that we are providing for years has been either independent living, that is HUD subsidized, or it's been assisted living or memory care in nature. And if I can, I don't know if this, yeah, this, this structure here in gray is the original building that was built in 1979, it was originally called Heritage Place 1 and Heritage Place Phase 2. And then I believe in 2005 or '06, we added Phase 3, and that's Heritage Place Phase 3, known today as the Grove 1, 2 and 3. This building that was built in about 2006 is known, was known as Coeur d'Alene Homes, is now referred to as the Garden at Orchard Ridge. And the building that was on the photos that Sean had presented is the old brick building, which is the old Coeur d'Alene Homes building. It's not the oldest of all the buildings that basically housed the senior housing that Coeur d'Alene Homes has been known for, but it is a vacant building now, and it's really a liability, we really need to get it down, and so we need to devise some plan to build something in its replacement. We have just under 13 acres of property here, and as Sean had indicated in his staff report, that we have been providing senior housing since 1921. So 94 years we have been providing senior housing. Our independent housing, which is housed in our Grove 1, 2 and 3, the average age of our resident there today is 85 years old. The average age of the resident that's housed in our garden, the old Coeur d'Alene Homes, is 89. So we would love to build something that we could, in fact, entice younger, albeit older than 62, residents to our campus. We would love to be able to provide couples housing. Right now, we have maybe two or three, maybe 1% or 2% of our total rooms would accommodate a couple. Almost all of our residents are single, and many of which, whose spouse lives in their existing home off our campus. in their existing home off our campus. And so we did a board retreat, we did some soul searching with some of our staff and our residents, and we evaluated what are the major needs of our facility, and one of those is couples' housing. We believe by providing the ability for an aged couple to age in place on our campus will do several things for us. Number one, they will be available as volunteers on our campus to provide some caregiving, which we are much in need of, as you can imagine with the average age of our residents. The other thing is that as we all will age in place, and that's you and me too, Brad, we're going to need some assistance. And so by having some of the health care that we have on our campus today, we will have the ability to provide some home health care on our campus instead of having to leave the grounds to provide those services. So what we're really trying to do is to build, you know, one- and two-bedroom type units that, in fact, a couple could sell their home and move into one of these facilities and gracefully age in place. We call them in our application, you know, active young adults. Well, depends on their age, but we all would love to believe that we can be as active as we are today. But when you get to 85 and 89, I can assure you that changes to a certain degree. So the reason for our request, the special use permit, is requested because we would like to get the ability to build as efficiently as possible. One of the things that the Village at Orchard Ridge has been known for, for its existence, is providing economical housing. And that's what we want to do when we provide housing for those younger, active couples. And the only way we can do that is to provide increased density to do it. Every project that has been built on this campus has obtained a special use permit from the City of Coeur d'Alene for an R 34 increase. Not all of them have used the full R 34. In our case, we believe that we can probably do this project for 50 units. I think the R 34 would require or allow us to go up to 68. And until we have a feasibility study, we don't really know exactly how many we should be building here. We feel, right now, that 50 probably is adequate for us. So every one of the projects that were built on this campus required or utilized a special use permit. That's the reason why we're here before you for a special use permit. When I look at your, the City of Coeur d'Alene's planned unit development and the requirements for zoning in this piece of property, the height requirement is dictated by zoning or by building code. And the building code today would allow us to design a project here that could have two levels of parking in a concrete structure, and then basically build up to five stories of wood frame or economical type construction over top of that. And so that's what we're asking for in the planned unit development, is the only deviation that we're asking is to be able to build higher, so that projects that are allowed in other zoning, commercial zoning as an example, do allow you to go up higher than that. It does create a major efficiency, as I'm sure Commissioner Messina would know, if we, in fact, can build stacking these units and to stack them five stories in height. Not to say that there aren't some good views and vistas on that piece of property if you were able to build that high. And so to provide our younger, active resident on our campus, a peace and quiet of our campus, plus the potential beauty of some of the views that would be available, we believe would be a real positive for us. So the planned unit development, as Sean said in his staff report, we're not asking for variation on setbacks, we're not asking for a variation on parking. In fact, we believe because we would hope that our potential resident would be an active couple, we don't believe that the half parking space per unit is probably adequate for our needs. And so we are going to provide more in that. But because of the way this planning works, you know, having to go before you to get these increases so that we could then go do a feasibility study, we didn't want to do a feasibility study based upon the underlying zoning and underlying height requirements, because it would limit us on what we actually could do. So our plan is, is if successful here tonight, we would immediately procure a feasibility study firm to evaluate whether or not we need, whether it's 50 units or more, whether it's one bedrooms or two bedrooms, or whether it's, you know, a mix of those. We've kind of done a concept layout that basically shows about 10 units per level, of which 20% of those is one bedroom and the others are two bedrooms. But we really don't know until we do that feasibility study. And that's the reason why we're somewhat vague in our presentation before you today. I don't have any other points that I'd like to make, other than the fact that I believe we are the only senior housing provider that is a faith-based nonprofit in our community. We are supported by 22 local churches, and I can simply tell you that our residents are well cared for. Any questions?
I've got a question for Gordon. I know you're saying you kind of want to do a feasibility of perhaps 50 units, but if we go into an R 34, you could do the 68.
Right.
Have you thought about if a PUD with conditions, say, we limit you to 50 and the height of what you're saying to be that, is that a comfort level for you, or is that a deal breaker?
Well, I would say, based upon the information we've put into it today, but we don't have that feasibility study, so I don't know whether they're going to say, well, I think there's a need for more than 50. Then if the limitation is put on us, as the staff report indicates, then we're going to be governed to 50. That's all we're going to be able to provide.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of put it out there, so that the rest of the commissioners, you know, I don't know what their feel is on the height, or the unit, or stuff like that.
Yeah, I didn't really realize that there would be that stipulation, but I'm not surprised because in my application, I indicated that was our plan, is to build 50.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, until we have that feasibility study, 50's a lot better than what we have right now.
Sure. And do you happen to know the height of the hospital off the top of your head? I know they're a five-story.
No, I do not.
They're at least five-story.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Just to give a comparison to what you guys look at. Alright, thanks, Gordon.
Well, I have a question of staff. How did you arrive at the 50 maximum? Is that just because that was what his narrative said?
I put that condition in there, and that was based upon the request of the applicant, as also that's what the remainder of the staff, the other departments, based their comments on. So I felt that we were for sure that we could supply the utilities and everything for 50 units. That being said, I didn't get any negative feedback from the departments, and nothing was limiting, so really, it's in your hands.
Hypothetically, if we didn't put that limit on it, and maybe they asked for 60 units, and one of the departments says, we can't provide services for that many units, there wouldn't really be a problem with the fact that we had a, that we lifted the limit because they just say we can't provide for that, and they would have to build according to whatever department could provide for, right?
Yeah, if you put the limit on there, and, or if you don't put the limit on there, and they request more, and we're not able to, they would have to upgrade the lines, the service lines, city service lines, as well as their own, to meet that requirement, so that they could build to that capacity.
I probably won't have a vote unless there's a tie, and I don't really see it adding up to a tie here. But just my point of view is, I don't see how, whether it's 50 units or 60 units or 65 units, I don't see a real problem with the density in there. 68 isn't that much different than 50. So I think probably, if I was voting, I wouldn't have a problem with just lifting that cap, because I don't see how, and that's why I'm asking you if you see any problem in there, because that would be one less thing that'd have to come back for us, and we'd have to have another hearing and amend the PUD.
Well, we don't know the size of the units. Are they one-bedroom, are they two-bedroom? Could they be, you know, could they be a studio? I've seen it, where that works in multiple, you know, widows, widowers, they can be adjacent to their, you know, memory care wife or husband. So I think that until you do that, you know, baseline, I don't know that we should restrict them to 50. I just don't know until, they don't know what they're trying to provide. And maybe they can put in more studios or more one-bedrooms, or, so I'd hate to restrict them coming in and then have to go through this all again. We know their height, we know their height issues, and we probably know there's a tight site there, so they're going to be restricted on how far their envelope can go. So I'm of the mind to not put that cap on it either.
Yeah, that's what I think. I think they have plenty of room. I mean, overall, they have a pretty big piece of land. That particular site has some restrictions. And it's well-served by the streets for traffic, so I don't really see a problem with, you know, 60 units over 50 units, traffic-wise and so forth. So that's what I was getting at, what you're saying. I'd rather not limit them. Go ahead, John.
I agree with both of you, or all of you. I think that this is one that, you know, whether it's 50, or 62, or whatever later, I don't know that anybody really benefits. It's kind of, this is one we're in for a penny, in for a pound. I think we're better off maybe relinquishing the restriction. Reading the staff comments that Sean points out, they're very, very strong. There's only one that I would have a question on, and that is the sewer folks mentioned that it's a private sewer. Just a question for you of whether, you know, it encourages you to evaluate the private sewer system there. Have you contacted Mike Becker or the wastewater folks?
I'm not familiar that we have a private sewer, I guess.
It's their own private sewer line that is from their existing structures to our main, that they were concerned about. The city isn't concerned, that's a private line.
But I think to the point, and Lynn, you make the point, that I think whether it's 50 or 68, it could be, in the end, the building permitting process limits you to 64 or whatever, because that's all the parking. So I think it kind of takes care of itself.
Yeah, I think they provide a real worthwhile need, they serve a worthwhile need in the community, so I hate to limit them. Okay.
Another question. This is more for staff. Based on what we have in front of us, it says, "Request for increased height for a five-story residential structure, maximum height 85 feet." In there is a narrative for 50 units. If we just approve this as a PUD, do those things kick in, given the fact that we're talking about no-units limit, height limit would be whatever the R 34 allows you to do? Would those have to be taken out from the applicant's narrative, or the application, or they're okay to do 50, 60, once they do the feasibility study?
Well, that would be based upon what your guys' findings are. So if you do approve the PUD and not the special use permit, they would be stuck with the residential density of R 17 with a maximum height of 85 feet.
Okay.
So with both of those, they would be able to go to 85 feet, and then whatever you decide is the maximum up to R 34. And there's two acres there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Gordon?
No, I guess the only comment I would make to Commissioner Ingles' comments is that the private line, you know, is simply a sewer line, and it ties into the city sewer. What we would do, once the feasibility study is done, is I would probably personally go talk to our engineering department, sewer water, to verify if, in fact, we now want to build a larger number of units here, just to make sure that we're in capacity to do that.
Right. It'll take care of itself.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gordon. I don't have a sign-up sheet here. Did anyone else want to testify on this matter that's out there? Okay. I guess not. I don't think you need your rebuttal time.
Well, they do have some people that signed up. This is my board.
Okay. Okay, so Kelly, is it Kelly Dionne? Is there Kelly out there? Did you want to testify? I had yes on here.
Well, I was going to, but Gordon, just everything I was going to say.
Okay.
And I just wanted to thank you, thank the board for coming here.
Okay, thank you. And Keith Taylor in favor, Art Flagan in favor, do not wish to testify, Ann Johnson. Okay, is that how it is? Okay, everyone's in favor, no one else wants to testify. I'm just asking, alright. Appreciate you coming down here tonight. Okay, anything else, Gordon, you want to add? Okay. Alright, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll step in here just for a second as Warren, and just let you know that you need to make two sets of findings, one for the planned unit development, as well as the other for the special use permit, which is the density.
Right, thank you. There is the possibility that we could have the staff do the findings, too.
Absolutely.
I'll make the findings and recommend staff do the findings, for speed of both requests.
Approved.
I didn't, I didn't get that. You said you'll do the findings?
No, I make a motion that the staff would do the findings for both items.
Would that be with the elimination of the condition to 50 units?
Well, I was going to have a discussion at that point.
I think you can incorporate that in your motion, and then they can make the finding as such. Correct?
Yeah, I would make the recommendation that there would be no limit as far as the number of units, and as far as the height goes, whatever the, I believe, R 39.
R 34?
R 34 would allow you to do, as well as any further comments from staff, and whether it's fire, sewer, and all the other departments at plan review.
Okay, now, let me ask you, Sean and Hillary, which motion was it, or maybe it's both of them, that the height and the density condition is tied into?
So the height request was the planned unit development, and that's what allows them to go over the height, which is 45 feet for an R 17, the request in 85. The other was a special use permit, which request was from R 17 to R 34. There's two acres there, so it doubles that number.
Okay. So you got that maker of the motion, so we need two motions, then.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the SP 4-15, that staff would do the findings for a proposed R 34 density increase special use permit in the R 17 zoning district.
So you're making a motion in favor of approval?
Yes.
And with no limit on density?
Correct.
Second.
Okay. Second, by Ingles, any discussion? Alright, so the motion is approval of SP 4-15, the R 34 special use permit, and no limitation on density would be just according to the code. Roll call, Shanna?
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Lutrip?
Yes.
Rumpler?
Yes.
Okay, so SP 4-15 is approved. And then next, we need a motion on PUD 3-15 from somebody.
I'll make a motion, PUD 3-15, a proposed 1.9-acre planned unit development. The
I'll make a motion, PUD-3-15, a proposed 1.9-acre planned unit development, the Village at Orchard Ridge PUD in the R-17 district residential at 17 units or acres zone, zoning district. Again, I recommend staff doing the findings, and question is, that's tied into the height? Okay, no restrictions on height?
And you mean the height, the height would be per code, which is 85 feet?
Yeah.
Code is actually 45 feet. The PUD adjusts it to 85, that is their request.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, excuse me.
With the PUD override the R...
So I think your motion would be to approve, approve PUD...
315.
315, including their request for an increase in height to 85 feet.
Yes.
And no, you know, delete the 50-foot restriction or condition that was proposed in the staff report. Is that clear enough?
The condition was to the density, not the height.
Yeah.
I thought there was, okay, I thought there was one on height. I'm sorry. There was not one on height. Okay, excuse me.
We're okay with the 85-foot height.
All right, so it's the 85-foot, all right.
Did you get that, Sean? Are we okay?
I did, and it's on record.
I apologize, I was thinking there was a limit on the five stories or something. Okay.
Second.
Long as I didn't confuse everyone too much. All right, we have another second by Ingles. Any discussion on this one?
Okay, roll call again, Shanna?
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Lutrip?
Yes.
Rumpler?
Yes.
Okay, so PUD-3-15 is approved. Both those were approved unanimously, so you're all set. You can do your feasibility study, and then the attorney's office will be doing some findings, which we'll probably have those at the next meeting for approval of the findings, but it's, the wheels are in motion. Thank you very much, thanks for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's all we had, isn't it?
Yeah, good job.
That is.
Motion for adjournment?
A second?
Motion by Rumpler. I wonder if we have a second?
Second, I'll second.
Oh, you, I, okay.
You weren't making the motion.
You thought you were second.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Oh, I was asking for a motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and you seconded it, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, so we're adjourned.